It is six o'clock. And I'd like to welcome you to the Thursday, December 15, 2022 Board of Commissioner meetings. You can see we have a full room here tonight. Have some celebratory things to conduct tonight and then the business of the county as well. Tonight, I have asked Commissioner Brunson at his last meeting of his eight-year term to lead us in our invocation, and I've asked Commissioner O'Quinn for the last meeting of his four-year term to lead us in the pledge. So if you would stand with me and bow your heads in prayer.
Pray with me. Father God, we come before you tonight and honor your presence with us. And as we celebrate this Christmas season, keep us mindful that it personifies the unconditional love that you have for us. You gave us your greatest gift, redemption through our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ, and we thank you for that so much. Lord, we thank you for blessing our community this past year. You kept us safe during both natural and man-made events that could have harmed us. But Father, we remember our first responders tonight. May your hand be upon them. Keep them safe as they keep us safe. Remember our military, both foreign and domestic. Keep them safe, Lord. Lord, we pray for our nation. It seems that we are on a wayward path that's contrary to your word. And we would pray for our leaders, the same thing we pray for us tonight, that you would give them and us wisdom and discernment. Help us to live according to the reason for the Christmas season, the love of our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ, and it is in his name I pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. You may be seated. I guess if you can find a seat. Tonight, we're going to deviate just a little bit. We've got a bunch of fellows standing up, crowding our room, and this is beginning to be old habit. So I want to recognize the 12-year-old boys for once again being the state champions. I want to also recognize the eight-year-old boys who came very close to being state champions again. They lost in a very close race, 26-24, I believe, and represented Glen County well as well. And Coach Judge Bartman, I want to read this proclamation to you and your team. This is the 2022 Glen County Red Death Football Championship Celebration Day. That's a reason all by itself to just instill fear in the opponents as Red Death comes forward. But whereas on the 2022 Glen County Recreation and Parks Department 12U All-Star Football Team, also known as Red Death, demonstrated great athleticism and determination in competing in the Georgia Recreation and Park Association All-Star Football Program, and as a result achieved incredible success. And whereas this remarkable team finished the GRPA All-Star Football Tournament with a 5-0 record, scoring a total of 220 points. And it gets better while allowing zero points to be scored by their opponents. And whereas, under the leadership and guidance of head coach Bart Alman and assistant coaches Scott Morrison, Sean Walker, and Joe Delaney, the team won the GRPA Class B State Football Championship on December 10, 2022 in Carrollton, Georgia, with an astounding 56-0 victory. That victory was over the Union City Parks and Recreation Department 12U All-Star Football Team. And whereas the Glen County 12U All-Star Team has now won back-to-back state titles in 2021 and 2022, and has brought enormous honor and pride to the Glen County Recreation and Parks Department and to the Glen County community. And whereas the Glen County Board of Commissioners wishes to congratulate the players, coaches, and parents for their hard work and dedication in winning the state championship. Now therefore, be it proclaimed by the Glen County Board of Commissioners, that it hereby recognizes the 2022 Glen County Red Death Football Players for demonstrating tremendous athletic talent, and the coaches for dedicating their time and enthusiasm to lead this team to the GRPA Class B State Football Championship, and proclaim today, December 15, 2022, as Glen County Red Death Football Championship Celebration Day. And in witness thereof, I set my hand this 15th day of December, 2022. Congratulations. And if you'll come forward.
Don't want to slide down behind them?
Yeah.
I did. Cool that we played on that tape. What is it, 13?
Coach, you want to say something?
Oh, I do want to say something. Last year, once the championship was awesome, we had 10 players coming back. We challenged those 10 players, come back to do something that no team had ever done before, which was win a back-to-back state championship. Those 10 players came back, they rose to the challenge, won the state championship. They led this team to that state championship. Played our first game together, played Liberty County, beat them 22 to nothing. We don't finish together, we only had three practices. Shut them out, and we jokingly, jokingly challenged the team. Can you be the first team in this group to go 5-0, win the state championship, and shut it cut you out? And they did. And Commissioners, I can tell you, these young men rose to the challenge, they rose to the occasion. They came, we practice a lot because I like to practice. They came to every practice, they worked hard. Only time anyone missed a practice was when one of our guys was going to win a wrestling match, or a guy wrestled a guy. We have a guy who does golf this weekend, and he was practicing, practicing, doing some other things, but that's allowed. But Commissioners, we had the best team, best cheerleaders in the state, they went with us everywhere, the best hydration specialists. And our field girl, Riley, Riley's not here tonight, but he went with the team. Heal, family, all the family went with us, and we just had a great time and a great year. I said this last year, I thought last year's team may be the best team you've ever had. This team may be the best team we've ever had. We'll see y'all next year.
All right. There we go.
They're about 15, 16 down. Really is.
You doing public comment now, or?
No, I'm gonna do that way after a while.
Good for you. I like that.
Parents, thank you so much for coming and supporting your kids. This is a great turnout. We really appreciate it. Congratulations again. I know it takes dedication on parents' parts as well, make sure they get their kids to the games, get to the practices. So we wish you all a Merry Christmas.
Didn't sound like it. Get so quiet down. Your brother's here. Your brother Ben's here. Over there on the corner, isn't he? Isn't that him and the blue blazer? My eyes bad. Maybe that's not him. Maybe I'm confused. I'm sorry. That's not him right there?
I believe there's room for seating if you want to try to find a place now. Next on our list of an evening of celebrating some good news, I want to state that Glen County is a beautiful place in which to live. And keeping it beautiful takes more than just one individual to do that. It takes time. And we're fortunate to have an organization in the community that makes it their mission to help us accomplish this. Since 1979, Keep Golden Isles Beautiful is a volunteer and community-based educational organization whose volunteers contribute over 14,000 hours a year to the community. We want to commend this organization on the help that they have given us this year, from cleanup programs on the causeway to the Georgia, Florida Weekend Beach Sweeps, recycling initiatives, and the Pear Village Holiday Readiness, just to name a few. We thank you for all your help and your service to Glen County. And I have for you tonight a certificate. Ms. Lee, if you would come up, we would like to give this to you as just a token of our thanks for what you and your organization do for Glen County. Thank you so much.
I'm just right here. Next on our list tonight, I want to recognize our search and recovery team, and I'm going to ask Andy, if you will say a few words on behalf of search and recovery, a few people to recognize tonight.
Right, so coming here, I was blessed to be in a meeting with people that are really selfless. The neighbors out of public name, we have all kinds of skill sets, but they come together. I feel like you've welcomed me at this point. Have I done my duty? I feel proud of you, Mark.
And it's the search and recovery squad. They go out there and, I mean, they put all this time in. Where's it? Oh, right here. All right. Okay, you can hear me. All right. There we go. So they donate, you know, their time, they get together, they do exercises, they train, and they do all this just to, you know, truly help the citizens of Glen County here. And we're going to recognize a few of them here, and I'm going to give you an idea. It doesn't matter who the EMA director is, how the commission changes, these people have been here for all these years. So we have Jaclyn Grissom, nine years, Assistant Chief. DeLinda Campbell, four years. Trish Schaefer, 13 years. Dicky Zell, the treasurer, 16 years. Johnny Hawkins, Sergeant of Arms, nine years. And Sherndon McLeod, 15 years. So these guys and gals, yeah. It's unbelievable. So, and you know, we have several folks here that have worked the Georgia, Florida event, not to mention all the, let's see, we got Georgia, Florida hurricane responses, Fourth of July. I mean, these are the events, and they recently helped deliver during the last hurricane, a doctor to the hospital when the causeway was closed. And they took a doctor so a baby could be delivered. So I mean, how about that? They came up there volunteering their time. And we're just going to recognize them tonight, so.
Yes, and James Stewart?
Right here.
Yes, sir. If you come forward. This is a certificate of distinguished service that we would like to present to you on behalf of the entire search and rescue team. We thank you for the work that you do for your team and all that they have done to help Glen County keep us safe and protected. So thank you so much. Yes, sir.
And I'll meet the team back here. We have the rest of your certificates here.
Y'all might think I'm almost through, but I'm not. I want to, I want to ask Chief Baptiste if he would come forward, please. Chief Baptiste joined us in June of 2021. That'll work. And when the chief came and joined us, he had a whole battery of uphill battles to climb. He had to go through post-certification as if he were an 18-year-old rookie on the force. And this man completed that course that I promise you most of us couldn't. And a man of his senior years took on that task and won. He gained his certification. His first six months were tumultuous, there's no doubt about it. He came on and in the midst of the Amada trial that was going on, we had other issues going on in our community, Chief Baptiste stood up to the test. He gave himself to the community, he gave himself to the dedication of the job to make the Glen County Police Department a better place. And we just want to say tonight that we thank you for the dedication that you gave to Glen County and to your dedication to your job, to your profession, to your character. We thank you for this time that you chose to spend with us in Glen County. You've made it a better place to live, and we thank you. And this is just a token of our appreciation to say that we wanted to wish you the very best moving forward. Best of luck in your future, gentlemen. Thank you so much. Thank you. That's it. 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 Thank you.[1522.10]
All right, where's that? Oh, right here. All right. Okay, you can hear me. All right. There we go. So, they, they donate, you know, their time, they get together, they do exercises, they train, and they do all this just to, you know, truly help the citizens of Glen County here. And we're gonna recognize a few of them here, and I'm gonna give you an idea. Doesn't matter who the EMA director is, how the commission changes, these people have been here for all these years. So, we have Jaclyn Grissom, nine years, Assistant Chief. Delinda Campbell, four years. Trish Schaefer, thirteen years. Dicky Zell, the Treasurer, sixteen years. Johnny Hawkins, Sergeant of Arms, nine years. And Sherndon McLeod, fifteen years. So, these guys and gals, yeah. It's unbelievable. So, and, you know, we have several folks here that have worked the Georgia Florida event, not, not to mention all the, let's see, we got Georgia Florida Hurricane Responses, Fourth of July. I mean, these are the events they, and they recently helped deliver during the last hurricane, a doctor to the hospital when the causeway was closed. And they took a doctor so a baby could be delivered. So, I mean, how about that? They came up there volunteering their time. And we're just gonna recognize them tonight, so.
Yes, and, and, James Stewart?
Right here.
Yes, sir. If you come forward. This is a certificate of distinguished service that we would like to present to you on behalf of the entire search and rescue team. We thank you for the work that you do for your team and all that they have done to help Glen County keep us safe and protected. So, thank you so much. Yes, sir.
And I'll meet the team back here. We have the rest of your certificates here.
Y'all might think I'm almost through, but I'm not. I want to, I wanna ask Chief Baptiste if he would come forward, please. Chief Baptiste joined us in June of nineteen, I mean, it's 2021, that'll worry. And when, when the chief came and joined us, he had a, a whole battery of uphill battles to climb. He had to go through post-certification as if he were an eighteen-year-old rookie on the force. And this man completed that course that I promise you most of us couldn't. And a man of his senior years took on that task and, and won. He, he gained his certification. His first six months were tumultuous, there, there's no doubt about it. He came on and in the midst of the Ahmadi trial that was going on, we had other issues going on in our community, Chief Baptiste stood up to the test. He gave himself to the community. He gave himself to the dedication of the job to make the Glen County Police Department a better place. And we just wanted to say tonight that we thank you for the dedication that you gave to Glen County and to your dedication to your job, to your profession, to your character. We thank you for this time that you chose to spend with us in Glen County. You've made it a better place to live, and we thank you. And this is just a token of our appreciation to say that we wanted to wish you the very best moving forward. Best of luck in your future, gentlemen. Thank you so much.
At this point in time, before we go into our regular meeting and, and the other presentations that we have for tonight, we'll open the floor for our, our public comment. We have one speaker tonight, Ms. Rebecca Shellnut. If you'll come forward, state your name for the record, and you'll have five minutes.
Thank you. I won't take that long. My name is Rebecca Shellnut. I'm here on the St. Simon Surf Sailor lease termination. I don't represent the club, but that's kind of the point. I've been coming down to St. Simons as a visitor until three years ago when I moved down here and became a citizen. And it's so much a part of the beach. It's the soul of the beach. And I remember taking pictures before I ever even met any of the sailors here of the boats. And I know that I'm not the only person. As I talk to other people, it's one of the memories they have of coming down on vacation to St. Simons, and it's so much a part of the, the heart and the soul of the beach here in Glen County. And I just wanted to thank you for making sure that we still have a place. My understanding is the last master plan, there will be forty-two spaces. And I guess I say that because for me, it's emotional. I didn't know these people three years ago when I moved down here, but I'd met them and came into contact with them, and that is who they are. They're representing Glen County for every visitor that comes down and wants to take pictures of the boats. So many groups consider this a significant part of their experience in Glen County as well. And I just thank you for your support so far and hope that other people in the future will have the same chance that I had growing up to have that memory. And we just thank you for what you've done so far. And just wanted to make sure you knew that it's not just the surf sailors who care about the sailing on the beach. Thank you.
Next, we're, we're gonna go back into our presentation awards. This is a night of bittersweetness. We're losing two commissioners tonight that have done an outstanding job for the people of Glen County. And also, it's a time to recognize the present Vice Chairman, David O'Quinn, who started this year as chairman, did a fantastic job, gave himself endlessly to pour into Glen County that which he thought was best. Scheduling and being out of town at, I think in August, he just realized that he couldn't do service to the chairmanship with, with his other obligations. And with great courage, he decided he would take a step back and, and allow me to, as Vice Chairman, to take over his chairmanship. I can't begin to tell you how many times David and I have talked, I'm sorry, Commissioner O'Quinn and I have talked. And to, to talk over the issues of Glen County, and what a tremendous sounding board he has been for me. I hope I have been that for him. He, he is of great value to Glen County. And I, I wanted to present him tonight, the traditional gavel of being Chair, and wishing the absolute best going forward. I, I can't tell you how sorry I am to see him leave the Glen County Board of Commissioners. But with that, David.
It is my great honor to present you with this traditional gift of departure as chairman for your work and dedication to, to Glen County. I know how much you love Glen County and how much you've poured your heart into it. We're trying to find a job for you starting in January, but, but I just wanna say absolutely, from the bottom of my heart, how much I appreciate you and the service you gave to this county.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Well, what's kinda odd is now I, as Vice Chairman, get to acknowledge his term as Chairman this year. So, it may seem like a love fest, but it's not. I mean, it's the way it worked out once I stepped down. But the fact is, Commissioner Neal and I came on board together four years ago and really got to know each other in our training as we went up to Athens for new commissioner, new commissioner school. And so, we, we ventured up there and shared some good meals, had a couple hamburger joints, and sat through a lot of meetings. But it began a friendship for us that has lasted throughout these four years, that we have been able to work together and bounce ideas off of one another in such a way that it's been, I think, hopefully beneficial to Glen County. I couldn't have, I think there's no commissioner has the ability to understand the breadth and depth and width of this county. And that they must, as commissioners, lean on their other commissioners and other folks in the county to kind of give them a, a good vision of what's going on in our county and what's needed. So, this year, as we begin this year, I started thinking back, you know, this time last year, you and I, as Chairman and Vice Chairman, we didn't have a county manager. We, you know, not only do we not have a county manager, but we're in the process of updating the organizational charge, the personnel policy, you know, putting, working with the city on the lost, putting together a swast. So, not only were you and I working on that, and it was a great opportunity to work on that, but all of us worked on that. And any commission, any commissioner who wants to get anything done has to work with other commissioners. And so, I, I appreciate the work that all these guys have done, and particularly Commissioner Neal, when it became evident to me that I couldn't finish my term. And I, I sat down and talked to him. I said, "Look, I don't think I can finish the term and do the job justice. And I'm gonna take a step back. Would you consider taking the role?" And that made, and people might say, "Well, that's, that's easy, easy answer." Yeah, he's gonna say yes. But when you're, when you're Chairman of the Board of Commissioners, you get pulled into everything. And I talked to Commissioner Neal today, and I asked him about his, you know, "What are you doing today?" This was for the meeting. Well, I'm at this meeting, this meeting, this meeting. As Vice Chairman, I wasn't at any of those meetings, but as Chairman, he had to be. So, Wayne, thank you for your service, for stepping in the rest of this year and doing what you did to carry forth the vision of all of us on this board this year and getting us moving forward. So, with that, I would like to present you the customary gift of the gavel for your term for this year.
Thank you. Sorta, sorta looks like the gift I gave him, right? Thank you, David. Just twenty-two more. So, at, at this point in time, it's time to recognize Commissioner Brunson. Served eight years as, as a county commissioner. And we all know how much fun it is. When, when I got elected four years ago, Bill, Bill says he never said it, but he did. He said, "We're gonna have a lot of fun down there." And, and, and I think there's been, been two times, maybe three. This, this job is, is not one that you come into lightly. Bill took that job seriously. He gave of his life for eight years. Not only, not only does being a commissioner take time, it takes time away from family and family sacrifices. And, and I know that, that Bill will attest to that. I've known Bill for over forty years. We go to church together. We've come through a lot of committees together. We, we've had to deal with, with a lot of stuff over those forty years. But it is, is my distinct honor tonight to recognize Commissioner Bill Brunson for his dedication to Glen County, for his love of this community, for knowing absolutely everybody in this county, and, and for the work that he's done on behalf of the people of Glen County. So, Bill.
On behalf of the Glen County Board of Commissioners and the people of Glen County, thank you. Thank you for your work and your dedication. I hope you will enjoy the next year.
Mr. Chairman, if I, if I could just take a minute, you know, when I was doing the invocation tonight, I was, it's funny how you just kind of remember things. And back when I served as Chairman, I thought it'd just be a good idea at one meeting to just pray the Lord's Prayer. And so, about halfway through the Lord's Prayer, there was a reverberation in the microphone. I got all tongue-tied. And I was about halfway through the twenty-third Psalm when somebody yelled, "Amen." But anyway, it, it has been an honor and a pleasure to, to serve District Four. I appreciate those folks giving me a landslide victory of seventy-five votes. The, that's truth. The, and Commissioners, I appreciate your allowing me to be the Chairman for two years and the Vice Chairman for two years. My eight years in leader, uh, four years in leadership were, were certainly uneventful compared to what you and David have gone through. I think you've been through everything but the kitchen sink, and both of you have handled that chore impeccably. And you've led us through some murky, uncharted waters, and I can't tell you how many hours these guys put in to do what they've done for these last couple of years. The, I also wanna thank the staff, you guys that made me look a lot better than I am. And I'll tell you, for most of the eight years, you've been understaffed and underpaid. And I think we've made some corrections to that and will continue to do so. But you never, you never did anything but pick up the ball and run with it. And, and then what do you say about Tamar and Aaron? Those two, Ox was in the ditch, and they picked up the mantle and co-chaired, I mean, co-chaired, were co-managers for, for months. And then sometime or another, they did their day job. In Tamar's case, it was, that's plural. But I just, it's been one of the honors of my life, and, and I appreciate the opportunity to have served folks of Glen County. Thank you.
And then finally, one, one last presentation. And this is again to Commissioner O'Quinn for serving at the at-large post one for the past four years. And as David said, we went to school together. We, we attended the ACCG mandatory county commissioner introduction courses in Athens. And, but through that, we forged a friendship of working together, sharing our vision for Glen County, how we could accomplish that vision. And, and as I said earlier, David has given of himself tirelessly for the people of Glen County. And I wanna thank him for his four years as a Glen County Commissioner.
Thank you, David. Thank you. I, I just wanna reiterate what Commissioner Brunson said, that the Glen County staff is a wonderful staff, and they do, they do tireless work day in and day out. And they do make, they do the service of the people, for the people of Glen County. I was about to say, they make the commissioners look good, but most people don't think the commissioners look that good anyway. So, but they do work hard, you know, from our, those that serve in public safety to those who serve in our rep parks and recreation, to public works, they're the ones who make this county work. And so, I take with great pride and, and pleasure to, to say thank you to all of them. And thank you for the fact that you have, you stand up each and every day and, and you go to work. And so, thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner. And with that, at this point, we'll move to our consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
If I may.
Yes, sir.
I have a short presentation to some of these outgoing stewards.
All right.
Have that present. Y'all can stay up here. I'll go sit down. Great. Well, I echo the sentiments that have been espoused. I love being on the Glen County Commission. I love these guys up here and our staff and working with them, and I'm gonna sorely miss their presence. I'm gonna start with Commissioner Brunson. I see him right beside the county commission on the golf course. He's in the fairway, and I'm usually in the ruck. But winter time's coming, and I know you're gonna have more time to play golf. So, I brought you a special inside chipping, in-the-house chipping kit so you can improve your score. That's the only time I heard you murmur under your breath was around the green. Sir, there's something to sharpen you up over the
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Year, and then you'd be ready for spring.
I appreciate that very much.
Now, the next gift for you.
Man, this is better than Christmas, I'll tell you.
Well, so Commissioner O'Quinn, as you know, lives on the north end of the island, and we talked a lot about traffic on Fredericka Road and traffic on Seattle Road. He kind of checking in, and then y'all kind of see what the traffic report is, right close to both of those roads. And sometimes the conversation goes, "Well, I think I'll pull over at the house and play another half an hour here, head down the road." So, you know, you won't be able to check in so much, but I wanna make sure you have the latest technology, a drone, that you can fly from your house down Fredericka Road to check out the traffic and know where to go. And then when you get to the stoplight at Fredericka and Seattle Road, you have to wait there for quite a while, and you can run down Seattle Road and know where to go. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. And then for each night, y'all have really poured everything you have, so the Glen County Commissioners want to send you on a vacation to a remote area in the Caribbean. I paid for it.
Dog.
But fully equipped. So, with that, we have a couple special gifts. The idea is that you can go find some isolated beach, you get a little Maratza party going, there's some nice poolfront beach bar. You can start tonight. But, you know, I like you to be fully equipped and dressed, so we wanted you each to have an official hat, even for that type of instruments at the bar.
Thank you, sir.
Let me have one of those. That is a gift for each of my commissioners. And it is Christmas, you know, it'll be a gift. So, do that, do that have a right to do? We have the latest technology in coffee drinking. You know, you got all coffees, but now it's got, so this is a special gift that when you say, "I want to add a coffee," it may stop you from adding coffee. Because these particular cups of technology, when you pour hot liquid, they unveil a full picture of our group. So, that's whether you wanna enjoy the presence and looking back or not. If you see how it works, this is the training picture. Go ahead. We use water instead of coffee. We're free.
All right. At, at this time, I'd entertain a motion to approve our consent agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to pull out a, from the
All right. All right. Can we get a motion to approve with the exception of item nine?
Make a motion to approve all the items in the consent agenda with the exception of item number nine.
Second. Have a motion by Commissioner Fendig, a second by Commissioner Rofalski, to approve the consent agenda with the exception of item nine. All in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. Let me take this moment to say that Commissioner Booker is not feeling well this evening is the reason he's not with us. All right. Item number nine, adopt a resolution amending sections 103.2 and 103.4 of the Glen County Personnel Policy Regarding Entry Salary Rates and Promotions. And Commissioner Tosterson?
I've asked the Commissioner for this. This is number, Mr. Chairman, number 15, and actually number six, but we'll do one at a time.
Well, we're on number nine right now. Commissioner?
Okay, I'm sorry. Number nine, I would like to defer this to the, for 30 days, to the second meeting in January for further review.
All right. We have a motion by Commissioner Tosterson to defer item number nine for 30 days until the second meeting in January. Do I hear a second?
I second.
All right. Commissioner Rofalski, a second. Any other discussion on this matter? All right. All in favor of deferring item nine until the second meeting in January, please raise your right hand. All right. I think that was unanimous. I believe it was. So item number nine is deferred. We come now to our public hearings. Public hearings will be limited to 30 minutes for each opposing side, with five minutes allocated to each individual speaker. Comments are to be limited to relevant information regarding your position and should avoid being repetitious. If your group has a spokesperson, please allow that individual to present your group's position in the time allocated. Your cooperation in this process will be greatly appreciated. Item number 15 is ZM 5232, billboard use parcel 03-26645. Consideration of a change of zoning request from R-21 Family Residential to Freeway Commercial, FC, for the installation of a billboard. The approximately one-acre property is located on Blythe Island adjacent to Interstate 95, parcel 03-26645. Miranda Music Smith, owner and applicant. Ms. Leaf?
Yes, I'm just going to see if I can see the presentation on the screen. Great, thank you. Good evening, Commissioner Stephanie Leaf, Community Development. This is ZM 5232. This application, as well as the next case, number 16, are both applications to rezone property on Blythe Island to Freeway Commercial to allow the use of a billboard. So this particular property is approximately one acre. It's currently zoned R-21 Family Residential, and the rezone request is to Freeway Commercial. The property is adjacent to I-95, and this is I-95 right here. And it is accessed via a private access easement that comes off of Brentwood Circle, which is in the Cameron Place neighborhood on Blythe Island. And these portions of property that you see here, this is the application for this item, and the next item is the one here in this corner or the bottom of this triangle, they were part of properties that are on the other side of I-95. And so when I-95 came in in the '60s, it did split these lots. So this is a survey of the property. Just zoomed in. This is where the applicant is interested in doing a billboard. Definitely has stated that the only use would be billboard. They do not intend to do additional Freeway Commercial uses. However, a rezone to Freeway Commercial without any other restrictions, you know, would allow any of the uses allowed Freeway Commercial. So we had some questions come up about other commercial zoning on Blythe Island. There is no Freeway Commercial zoning on Blythe Island at all. The closest Freeway Commercial is closer to Exit 29. But there is a few pieces of highway Commercial zoning. This is Blythe Island Highway, so it is a long Blythe Island Highway. There isn't anything further up on Blythe Island. The applicant did submit some additional materials to help explain what they are looking to do on the property. Again, here is the property for this application right here. The blue symbols are nearby houses. So just kind of showing the distance. This is a wooded area. The applicant does own this access easement, accesses property, and also owns property over here, but this is a separate property. They also submitted this showing, some questions came up at the Maile and Planning Commission meeting about proximity to other homes nearby. So this just shows the distance, and this is also wooded through here. They have indicated they don't plan to do digital billboards. They have indicated they would like to do a lighting on the billboards, but they would like it to be lower scale, such as the image in this picture. But right now, there aren't any restrictions proposed on digital, so unless that was something added that could potentially be done under the zoning. So just a few more examples of what they are looking to do on the site. And so this is the property as shown from the interstate. So at the Maile and Planning Commission meeting, they did recommend approval of the application, but they did want only a portion of the lot to be rezoned to Freeway Commercial. And so what they had mentioned was 100 feet from the property line that's adjacent to I-95, just so the remainder of the property didn't become Freeway Commercial. This would stay R-20 and just this portion. So they did submit a survey that would show this 100 feet back that would be allocated for the Freeway Commercial. So the MPC held a public hearing on December 6. They did vote unanimously 7-0 to approve the rezone, recommend approval of the rezone. And the condition was Freeway Commercial zoning for the sole purpose of billboard use within that 100-foot depth that I showed you on that survey. And these are your possible actions. And Miranda Music Smith is the applicant. She's here this evening. And also William Ligon is here with her, representing her. Happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Leaf. Before we open the public hearing, Commissioners, anyone have a comment? This is a public hearing. We will open this with people that would speak in opposition to ZM 5232. If you would like to speak in opposition to this, please come forward, state your name for the record, please. Anyone to speak in opposition? Seeing none, hearing none, we'll close that portion. Those that wish to speak in favor of ZM 5232, please come forward and state your name for the record. You'll have five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm William Ligon, and I represent the applicant in this case. And as has been mentioned, this property is right on I-95. The applicant does propose and will agree to a restriction that this would not be a one of those digital billboards that flashlight everywhere. The area in question is not visible from any of the houses around it. She also wants to keep it at a relatively low level. In this area, the interstate is above the grade, and her billboards would not be above 25 feet over the highway, the interstate grade. So it would be, you know, as you saw in the photographs, relatively low-level, not a very bright-type billboard on the property. I'd be glad to answer any questions that anyone might have.
All right, sir. If you'd stand by for commission questions. Anyone else that would like to come forward and speak in favor of ZM 5232? Anyone else to speak in favor? All right. Hearing none, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing on this item. And Commissioners, we're back to you.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to ask you to make a quick question. My first concern is the precedence that this action would set. Currently, there are no billboards existing on the stretch of Highway 95 between Turtle River and South Brunswick River, which is all of Blythe Island. There is no Freeway Commercial zoning on Blythe Island at all. There are only five highway Commercial zonings on Blythe Island. Those are on Highway 303. You know, back when I first came on board as a Commissioner, you know, we denied Potley Farms a forest agricultural zoning because of the concerns about the commercial activity. Although, and when we did approve Ms. Smith's rezoning for her horse farm, it was for non-commercial use only. It was for private use. I cannot in good conscience support the request for the rezoned residential property to Commercial.
All right, I'll entertain a motion.
Can you put the motions back up? Mr. Chairman, my motion is to deny the proposed zoning decision.
Have a motion from Commissioner Tosterson. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Have a motion by Commissioner Tosterson, a second by Commissioner O'Quinn. Any other discussion on this? All right.
Attorney, I've got one attorney, Mr. Attorney. Because of the relationship of my family and the outdoor advertising billboard business, even though this is nothing direct in that relationship, am I clear to vote, or should I abstain? Clear to vote.
All right. Then all those in favor of denying ZM 5232, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. Item number 16, ZM 5233, billboard use parcel 03-27362. Consideration of a change of a zoning request from R-21 Family Residential and M-21 Family Residential to Freeway Commercial, FC, for the installation of a billboard. The .34-acre property is located on Blythe Island adjacent to Interstate 95, parcel Let me repeat it. Miranda Music Smith, owner and applicant. And again, Ms. Leaf.
Thank you. This is ZM 5233, and this is another parcel near the last case. In this case, this property is a mixed zoning of R-20 and M-20, so both single-family, though, and a rezone to Freeway Commercial for only a billboard use as well. So again, here's the access off of Brentwood Drive. Here is the property adjacent to I-95. Here's a survey of the property. And this is approximate location where they would place the billboard. And similar to the last case, the same kind of style as indicated in the last case, and I can pull up those photos again if you would like. But the MPC did consider this on December 6. They voted 6-1 with Commissioner Clark opposed to recommend approval of ZM 5233 as presented. And these are your possible motions, and Ms. Smith and Mr. Ligon are here for this application as well.
Okay. Thank you again, Ms. Leaf. Is this the definition of spot zoning? To approve an isolated piece like that for special use?
I might defer to the county attorney on that question, if I could.
Is this, does this enter the definition of spot zoning?
No, sir. I don't believe it does.
Okay. Thank you. All right. This is a public hearing. Before we open the public hearing, Commissioners, is there anything that you wish to add? All right. This is ZM 5233. Those who wish to speak in opposition to this zoning, rezone request, please come forward and state your name for the record. If you wish to speak in opposition to ZM 5233. All right. Seeing none, hearing none, we'll close that portion. Those that wish to speak in favor of ZM 5233, please come forward and state your name for the record. Again.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, my name is William Ligon, and the applicant would ask the commission to defer taking a vote on this at this time to a later date, if we could.
Ready for a motion?
Yes, sir.
Move to defer.
Second. All right. At this time, there is a motion and a second from Commissioner Brunson and Commissioner Rofalski to defer this item to a later date. Any discussion? All in?
This is exactly the same thing as it was previously. I don't understand what any criteria would be different in this particular motion than it would in the previous motion.
All right. Any other discussion?
I think just, Mr. Attorney, will you explain why the applicant might be making that request if the same vote was made? The consequences of a same vote?
I'm not sure, Commissioner. I defer to the applicant to answer that question.
Okay. You can.
We would like to have the opportunity to go back and revisit some of the concerns that have been expressed to see if we can provide some answers and offer potential solutions. I mean, these properties are isolated. I know there's some thought that it may have been a part of that other rezoning for the horse farm, but this property is not a part of that property. I mean, the lots were disturbed, and were cut in half when the interstate was built. You know, the areas that are involved are relatively small. We'd just like to have that opportunity to see what we can do to maybe address some of the things that have been said and come back before the commission.
Counsel, my advice, and you don't need my advice, but in your deliberations, I would address the precedent that you're setting here.
Sure.
There are a lot of parcels out there that would like to maybe peel off something, put a PD tax in with a billboard or a Freeway Commercial with a billboard. This is not one property out there. There are a lot of them. And how do you turn the next one down? And that probably needs to be part of your discussion.
Sure. We'll look at that. Thank you.
All right. We have a motion and a second to defer item number 16, ZM 5233. All in favor of deferring, please raise your right hand. Those opposed? That is 4 to 2. All right. So it is deferred. Item number 17, ZM 5171, Paul's Wildlife District East, Section P2, Plan Development District Amendment. Consideration of an amendment to the Paul's Wildlife District Plan Development District, PD, case number GC-34-99, for approximately 74 acres located at 168 Petersville Road, parcel number 03-12109. The uses proposed include recreational and cultural uses and other uses to include, but not limited to, recreational vehicle park, commercial uses, and residential uses. Melinda Brewley White, the Ligon Law Firm, and I guess, Mr. Ligon, you're here for that. William Ligon is representing for Smith &amp; Sons Seafood Incorporated, owner. On October 6, 2022, the Board of Commissioners remanded ZM 5171 back to the MPC. Ms. Leaf?
Thank you. This is ZM 5171. And as the chairman stated, you all did see this application back on October 6. The MPC in September had taken no action on the application. They had a couple of different motions, both failed for lack of four votes, but it did so it did move forward to the VOC. So you all looked at this on October 6, and you did remand it back to the Maile and Planning Commission in order to take a closer look. Commission in order to take a closer look at some of the requests, some of the requests for uses, and potentially add some restrictions to the requests. So the applicant did submit a revised plan development text for the property. They did make a few changes from what they had originally submitted. Billboards initially were proposed as an allowed use on the site. In their revision, they do now prohibit billboards. That's no longer a use allowed in the PD text. Multifamily residential is a conditional use, but I will add that it is rather vague. There are no density or other restrictions specified. It just says multifamily use as allowed in the zoning code, but there's a variety of different areas in the zoning code that address multifamily. And then access onto Highway 99 is the only access allowed. They do allow emergency access onto Petersville Road. They also, which I didn't add to the list, they also prohibited processing facilities. There were some concerns that the owners, because they do have a seafood processing facility, that that might be a use they would like to have on the property, but they did add prohibition on that in the PD text. There's no processing allowed on the site. They do still include an RV park with a maximum of 500 spaces and also highway commercial uses. The 50-foot buffer adjacent to residential properties remains as well. So here is the property after Petersville, and as I mentioned, Highway 99 is the primary access with emergency only off of Petersville. And then this is the exhibit that they have as the master plan for the plan development text. And this is the entirety of the proposed PD text as it has been revised. It's also in your packet. The applicant did include some additional submittals since the MPC meeting, just some photos of what they planned for an RV park. They do do an RV park on the site, so just a few images of what kind of park they would have, some of the amenities. So the MPC had a public hearing on the revised PD text master plan on December 6. They did vote 6-0 with Commissioner Strickland recused to recommend approval of ZM 5171 as modified by removing multifamily from the PD text. So that was what they did ask for, was to remove the multifamily uses in entirety from the PD text, so that would not be allowed as a permitted or conditional use. And these are your possible actions, and Mr. Ligon is here representing the applicant. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Leaf. Commissioners, any questions before we open the public hearing? All right, this is a public hearing for ZM 5171, Paul's Wildlife District East. Those that wish to speak in opposition to this zoning, please come forward and state your name for the record. Have 30 minutes to the side and 5 minutes per individual. Please state your name for the record, please.
Good evening. My name is Earl Duncan, and I'm here to speak on behalf of the homeowners and heritage estates. I'll be the spokesperson, I guess, for them, but I believe there's going to be property owners that wish to speak after me. The comprehensive land use map in this particular situation designates this particular parcel as low-density residential. And if you look at a map, all of the surrounding locations in terms of heritage estates and all the single-family residents on Petersville Road are also low-density residential. And what the applicant appears to be proposing is that he be allowed to construct or use this site for a 500-site RV park. And I think the commission needs to look at a few things, at least initially, and think about them before some of the homeowners speak. If you think about that and you think about the density, you have the potential for 500 to 1,000 vehicles with potentially half of them being living quarters on that particular location if the site is utilized to the maximum potential that the applicant is requesting. And if you think about that, depending on how many people are in those RVs, you could be looking at 1,000 people, depending on how many people in RV. It could be a little more, it could be a little less. Another issue that the commission needs to think about is traffic. The road, Highway 99, in its current state, is not equipped to handle anything like that. Think about the accident that happened a couple of days on I-95. It literally backed up that exit for hours. Could you imagine if you had 500 RVs in that location, either trying to get in or out at the same point in time? You would have had an even bigger mess. You think about the turning radius and the length of those types of vehicles. They would always, almost always be in other lanes, whether coming in or out of that location. Also, I believe where the proposed entrance is in this particular location, there's actually a curve there, which also presents another hazard to this proposal for the board. If you go out to Highway 99 and you drive in that location, there are no breakdown or emergency lanes where anybody could even pull off if some incident happened. If you had an RV, you may have half of it still on the road if it broke down. Think about the impact that it has to sewer. If you have 500 spots and you have a possibility of two or more individuals in each of those RVs, that is a definite increase in sewer capacity that has not been anticipated or thought about in this request. The last thing is a potential crime. If you put 500, for lack of a better word, residents or temporary residences in that location, as well as looking at Buc-Ee's out there and thinking about New Hope down the road, you have so many potential transients coming through. They'd be in those neighborhoods, and you would, looking at a potential increase in crime in that particular area. In this particular case, there are no specific Glen County ordinances addressing RV parks other than are mentioned in HC, FC, and MH. The RV parks simply have to follow the same regulations that any other business in Glen County. So there's nothing they really have to do in terms of complying with anything. There's no specific things that RV do, RV parks have to do in this particular case to operate, other than just act like a normal business. And that seems like there should be more in place in terms of some type of checks or balances as to how these things operate, rather than just as a normal operating business, because it's really not. This should also be denied, because if you look at HC, Section 17713, Subpart 9, it says that there's an RV park reference in there, but it states there must be direct paved access to an arterial road. In this case, there's no direct access to 99, and Highway 99, at this point in time, is not an arterial road. It is just a connector road. An arterial road would be like two lanes in each way, and that's not the situation in this case. The commission also needs to realize that as if this request is approved, Smith &amp; Sons would be allowed to, they wouldn't be limited just to RV parks. They would be allowed to put anything under the HC out there. So you could look at the ordinance.
Mr. Duncan?
Yes, sir.
Excuse me for interrupting you. If you're speaking for a combined group, you can exceed the 5 minutes.
Yes, sir.
Otherwise, you are at 5, so if...
I am.
Okay, and I thought you were, but I just wanted to clarify. Excuse me for interrupting. No, sir? Okay. And he's good?
So if you look at the ordinances for HC, you could potentially have anything out there. It's not just limited to an RV park. And the reason I say that is because I've actually had some experience with Smith &amp; Sons in the past. I am the McIntosh County Industrial Development Authority Attorney, and I've been that since 2008. And there are restrictive covenants out in the industrial park over, outside of Darien. And Smith &amp; Sons is located in that park. And there was some correspondence sent to Smith &amp; Sons saying that they were in violation of restrictive covenants. The response we, the response the authority received was is they were not under the covenants. So at that point in time, they proceeded to sue the Industrial Development Authority, saying they weren't under the covenants. Superior Court over in McIntosh County held that they were. They appealed it to the Court of Appeals, and it was affirmed. So they were under the covenants. Further correspondence was sent to them, saying that they were in violation. They still refused to comply. So the Industrial Development Authority has had to bring actions against Smith &amp; Sons to enforce their restrictive covenants. And I say that because if you look at past experiences of them, you really don't know what you're getting in this case. If you look at everything before you, you kind of get the idea it may be an RV park. But if you think about it, if this was approved, you could potentially have anything under the HC zoning ordinance put out there. This particular property was purchased in 2017, and at that time, a request was made to construct the cold storage building. That was denied. So I guess to come back and say, now, we want to put an RV park, it looks like that they actually purchased that particular parcel with the intent to put in the cold storage. That didn't work out. Now they're trying to say, well, now we're going to put an RV park, because that appears to be the easiest way to get this through, even though if this is approved, it could be anything under the HC zoning. The past actions of the commission regarding this location have been, and have always been, to protect the surrounding residential neighborhoods. The homeowners out there understand that everything west of the canal could be developed. But in this particular case, we're not talking about west of the canal. We're talking about a parcel that had been designated as low-density residential. And what we're asking the commission today to do is deny the request, because you don't know what you're getting. They say it may be an RV park, but if this is approved, it could be anything under the HC. So what we're asking the commission to do is deny the request today.
Thank you, Mr. Duncan. Anyone else that wishes to come forward and speak in opposition?
Before I begin to...
State your name for the record, too, please.
Mr. Chairman, before I turn on my timer, my hearing device has gone out. The county device has gone out, so I can barely hear anything anyone is saying. So if you have anything to say to me, I hope you will all speak louder. I'm Julian Smith, known as Putty. Although my wife and I live on St. Simon's Island, we also own a vacant lot on our historic canal, south of where the applicant is asking your approval for a recreational vehicle park with 500 spaces alongside the historic canal. As I believe some of you already know, I would like to see the county do more to protect our historic canal from neglect, abuse, and misuse. Five years ago, when the same applicant asked you to approve a seafood processing plant on this parcel, I suggested the highest and best use of this 74-acre property would be a low-density conservation subdivision designed for families who would protect the scenic, recreational, and environmental values of our historic canal. That's one of the many reasons why I'm now asking you to deny approval of this application or to once again remand this application back to the Mainland Planning Commission and encourage the applicant, his lawyer, his surveyor, and the community development staff to provide a better application and staff report. Let me start with my first exhibit, and you'll see it up there. The site plan that shows each of the 500 spots. I went to the county and bought a copy that's easier to read than what's on the website. You will notice that this document has no scale, no date, no descriptive material, no information about who did the survey or created it, who is responsible. Perhaps they were embarrassed and didn't want to put their name on it. Let me add that I have visited the site several times in recent days and have not found any notices of this public hearing on Highway 99 or Petersville Road. Let's now turn to the staff report. Item 1 on Page 3 fails to explain as required how or why approval of this application will permit a use that is suitable in view of use and development of adjacent and nearby property. Item 2 on Page 3 fails to explain as required how or why approval of this application will not adversely affect the existing use of adjacent or nearby property. Item 4 on Page 4 fails to explain as required how approval will not cause an excessive or burdensome use of existing streets, transportation facilities, utilities, or schools. Item 5 on Page 4 indicates that the county's future land use map indicates that this lot is designated as low-density residential, but does not explain why you should ignore the current flum designation. Item 5 on Page 5 does not explain as required how existing or changing conditions give supporting grounds for approval or disapproval. Now let's turn to just one item in the seven-page description of proposal provided by the applicant or his attorney. The stipulation on Page 3 under Site Access and Traffic that there will be only one limited access point on Petersville Road to be used for emergency access only, that's a quote. But this survey I held up, the one that's on the screen, contradicts that statement, and there is no indication about how construction, vehicles, and workers will access the site before or after an access is created from Highway 99. Commissioners, we already have nearly 400 RV parking spaces on the south side of the county in three well-managed parks. Why do we need a huge RV park on the north side of the county in an area where there are, at this point, no groceries, convenience stores, or filling stations? If this RV park is meant to take advantage of plans to build a Buc-Ee's Travel Center near Exit 42 from I-95, and if you really believe we need an RV park near Exit 42, then please deny this application and let a reputable and experienced developer and manager of RV parks option this or another appropriate site and apply. Thank you for a little extra time, but you took up a lot of our time with all kinds of stuff that was not even on the agenda. Thank you.
State your name for the record, please.
Good evening. My name is Valerie Atkins. Good evening, Commissioners, and Chairman Neal, our Commissioner for Heritage Estates. I have not got the statistics that have been presented, but I do have some RV facts that I've achieved or acquired through quite a bit of reading. One notable fact is that typically 20% of all RV park tenants are permanent. I don't know if that's what the commission wanted, when they wanted 500 spots, and 20% of those spots would represent typically permanent residents. A common practice for RV parks is for the owner of a travel trailer to park it and rent it out like an Airbnb. Regulating rental properties beyond the 30 days currently is a challenge for the county. I'm just questioning whether or not the county is prepared to police the influx of possible additional rentals in travel trailers. A common issue for RV parks and campgrounds is homeless populations living on the outskirts and utilizing the camp showers, bathrooms, and laundries. The potential is high this problem would present itself here. They've already talked about the cultural aspect of it, but also be aware that, I think it's like 24 acres of this, 74 is wetlands. So now you're down to 50 operational acres typically that could be developed unless they do the offset. Your website identifies that there's 12 miles of canal, the Altamahaw Canal, which goes through this property. A quote from the Glen County website and its 177-page report on the historical significance of the canal is, it states, "The Altamahaw Canal is a striking historical feature of Glen County." And it would be surrounded by what? We're not real sure. In addition to that, if there was any flooding or wet, flooding because of the canal or a tornado or anything like that, think about the possible damage of flooding from sewage onto those wetlands because by 500 RV parks and other facilities that are located there. With the building of Buc-Ee's, it's put a lot of pressure on the area already, and that's going to be a huge influx already of traffic. I'm sure some other folks are going to point out some of those distinctions, but I would request that you not approve this RV park. Thank you.
The next person to speak in opposition, please state your name for the record, please.
I have something for you all. I don't know if anyone... My name is Cheryl Cunningham. I'm speaking in opposition to this part. I can make it short and sweet. I have more points than you've got my talking points in that presentation. I'm asking the Board of Commissioners to deny ZM 7151. Per Glen County regulations, which is found on the Land Use section, there are three uses. One is a direct access to the property from an arterial road. It has to have three acres. Now, all of us agree, there are three acres. That's not a discussion. If you look at the maps that I've put into my exhibit, you will see that on map 1, 2, 3, and 4, which includes the county's GIS, there is a strip of land that rests between this property that's being asked to be rezoned and 99. That is not direct access. Secondly, it says it's to be on an arterial road. This road is not. 99 is not an arterial road. And in the exhibit, I've included in Exhibit 5 and 6, one is from the Georgia DOT site, identifying State Road 99 as a collector road. Also, in the Glen County bats, it also designates it as a collector road, not an arterial road. 303 is. This is not. We have a lot of issues, and I want to give a few more people time. The bridge in 2009 was switched from being a four-lane bridge to a two-lane bridge with dedicated turn lanes. It has issues with larger vehicles coming off the, when you come up the ramp heading south to make a turn. It's a very difficult turn. And that is going to be hard for many of our RVers. There are no active plans. And on Exhibit 9, I went to the DOT place where they have all of the projects. There's nothing there. You have a copy of it in there. When is 99 going to be widened? Now, if you watch an RV trying to turn on a road, we watch the trucks do it all the time when they're trying to get onto 99 from US 17. And I back up when I see them coming, because I know if I don't, they're going to hit that little curve and then come towards me. Imagine an RV, or especially one not familiar with Glen County roads. State Road 99 in this strip is 1.2 miles. And on that, I've put for you in Exhibit Number 10, the areas that are actually zoned. Commercial, and those that are zoned residential. And the vast majority of the land around this is zoned or single-family residential. The property north, or excuse me, west of this land has applied for, has put in a ZM, and I have put the map for that one in your packet, too. And it shows that most of the land next to this property will be wetland. We don't know how they're going to develop it. They're asking for commercial, residential, both. Across the street, we have another set of land, and the plans were online, and that's where I pulled the plan from. The bridge, there is a bridge that, when 99 crosses the canal, that is old. It's going to have to be replaced. It's only two lanes. So all of these together, the fact that it does not meet the standards of Glen County, it is not a collector, it is not an arterial road, it's a collector road. The fact they do not have, at this point, direct access to 99. Zoning this area commercial will be a detriment to the landowners in this community. Thank you.
Please come forward and state your name for the record.
Good evening. I'm Susan Inman, Coastal Advocate for 100 Miles. We are a nonprofit that works to protect the coast through education, advocacy, and civic engagement. Thank you for the opportunity to add comments regarding this proposal. I'm here tonight to ask you that you deny the request to amend the planned development for the RV park. You will hear, and you have heard from the residents, that this proposal is controversial for several reasons, many of which have been identified by the county staff report. Residents here and in other meetings have already expressed concerns about the traffic created by adding 500 RVs to the road surrounding the natural areas and homes. And as a reminder, this section of State Route 99 has two big traffic changes in the near future. The west side, the I-95 side, is expecting to bring 20,000 cars per day with the new development. But then on the other end, the roundabout is proposed to be built there, and that's not even including the RVs with this new proposed development. These are major increases in traffic, where the residents need your authority to ask for changes and collaborate with Georgia Department of Transportation to help with the residents' traffic safety concerns. A simple, valuable example is the addition of sidewalks to keep people safe and off of highway, off of the highway is important, and that's not on any of the maps. So if you could definitely look at those maps and add your authority, that would be greatly appreciated. Also, it's within your authority to ask these developers of large parcels to aid in regional public benefits, like the sidewalks I mentioned, but also buffers, and then the need for the fire and EMS, and so on. There is a certainty that this proposed development and all the surrounding development will burden Glen County with upfront and ongoing costs to extend infrastructure and services, including roads, water, infrastructure, stormwater management, and emergency services. Finally, this applicant's property includes many acres of sensitive wetlands that have yet to be recently surveyed. In this rezoning, if this rezoning occurs in anticipation for 500 RV lots, the increase of impervious surfaces, vehicle emission, the pollution created by visitors, which includes waste, light, and sound, will undoubtedly impede the quality of these assets and impede the wildlife corridor in which this is situated, near the refugees and other nearby properties, also including the residents that are nearby. These wetlands should remain intact to continue offering critical flood mitigation for Glen County. After listening to the concerns of the residents and what I spoke of, I ask you to deny the proposed amendment requested this evening. Thank you for listening, and thank you for your service.
I think we have time for one more speaker who might wish to speak in opposition.
My name is Stu Graham. I live in Heritage Estates at 125 Apache Road. We've heard a lot about, I ask that you deny this request. We've heard a lot about RV park on this particular piece of property. However, I would like to remind you that if this property is rezoned to highway commercial to allow not only the RV park but other uses, you are taking a piece of residential property and allowing it to be commercial. I believe that the goal is to have commercial property. If the RV park fails with regard to planning, execution, or whatever, and you have rezoned this property to commercial, the book's open. Just about anything commercial could be put on this property. This is residential property. It always has been. But it is also critical to the development of Glen County that we have single-family residential areas available for development. There's a lot of apartments going up in Glen County. There's a critical housing shortage. But if this is not kept single-family residential, as it currently is, or low-density residential, then where do people go for the American dream and the Glen County dream? This county is a jewel. Please maintain it as a jewel and help that by providing single-family residential areas that people can move into and live their American dream. Thank you very much.
I believe that will take up the 30 minutes allocated for those that speak in opposition. So we'll close that portion of the hearing and open it to anyone that wants to speak in favor of ZM 5171. State your name for the record, please.
Commissioners, my name is William Legan, and I represent the petitioner. Before I really begin, I want to introduce someone else to you who's in the process of acquiring this and that will be developing this into the RV park, Mr. John Genret, and his attorney here, Amanda Williams, who could confirm that. And this process is in escrow, and a lot's depending on what may happen here tonight. I'd like to really, I'd like to begin by talking about the current zoning, which is under a planned development text. In 1999, this text was established for 2,000 acres in this area, and this property was a part of that text. The text was going to allow for the establishment of a kind of a wildlife amusement park. It was going to be a very, very significant commercial operation in this area. And I'd like to just read to you some of the uses that would involve the property within that park, although not specifically on this piece, but those uses have a direct impact on what would occur on this piece of property. There could be 500 hotel rooms, 300 campsites, RV sites, educational centers, welcome centers, tour staging facilities, water exhibits, land exhibits, boat trails, pedestrian trails, free-range herd areas for animals, including exotic animals, movie theaters, performing art theater, amphitheaters, animal demonstration theaters, African Village Center and exhibits, roadways for tour vehicles, exterior animal storage provisions, interior animal storage provisions, veterinary care facilities, arts and crafts facilities, game and video arcade facilities. And those are just a few of the permitted uses. But the property that we're talking about here was really going to be the gateway to all of this. In fact, it was the heart of the operations, because this piece was to be permitted for several uses. First was parking. Up to 5,000 vehicles could have been parked on this, on this property. So you would have people coming in off of I-95, coming in from Highway 82, 341, 17, coming onto Highway 99, and coming onto this property to visit that park if it was going to be, once it was built and developed. But there was also more that was going to go on in this property. Because, see, if you, if you put 5,000 parking spaces, that would only use up 35 acres of that property. Well, what would the other 45 acres be used for? Well, it was established for maintenance facilities. So you would have buildings in there that would be servicing all of the buses and trains and carts and things that would be used in that big economic development area. In essence, it would be kind of like a light industrial area where all those repairs and workings were going on. Not only that, there were going to be a lot of wildlife exhibits and exotic animals exhibits. One of the other purposes were for support of the PALS activities, which means that you could be storing all the animal food. You could even potentially have the veterinary clinic there. You could have all the animals, you know, with animals, that many animals produce a lot of waste, and that waste has to be collected and cleaned and maintained for those animals to have sanitary facilities. That could have even been stored in that facility under this zoning text. So this, this was, like I said, this was the heart, this was the gateway to a huge, huge economic investment that was going to go on in this, on this piece of property. And so when you think of the application that's being made now, just to change that to allow for the installation of an RV park, it is, I mean, when you consider everything that could go on, this is a much better use for that, that piece of property. And it's certainly a lot less disruptive than the commercial activities that would be going on, on there. 500 RV parks is, spaces is really, is a 10% reduction of the vehicles that could be, that could have been, that were permitted on that property right now. But not only that, you know, obviously, times change, times change, and the PALS facility is not going to be there now. And so we need to come up with a zoning that was, that is consistent with the current zoning, or a use that's consistent, but also that's consistent with some of the other changes that have occurred, that are occurring in this area. We have the Buc-Ee's facility that's just north of that. The commission has approved that. You can't have an animal park on that area now. This use is consistent, is consistent with that. I mean, it, it, it will be complementary to the Buc-Ee's facility. The developer is going to put in a, invest a lot of money on this facility. We're talking about 25, maybe even $30 million to create one of these, these high-end mobile home parks. And you've seen the pictures earlier of the beaches and the facilities, the clubhouses. If you compare the activities that would be going on under the current PD text without amendment, I mean, you, if that wildlife park were established, you might hear engines revving, the work going on, you'd have 5,000 vehicles coming in. But now you may hear, you know, kids playing in the lakes, swimming in the lake, playing volleyball out there. I mean, it's, it's a significant investment, and the use is, that is proposed tonight is consistent with a commercial activity that is already established under the PD text for this property. It's just a slight change to allow the, then the development of the RV park there. So we would ask that you would approve the change to the zoning text. It's not that much of a departure from what's there. The RV park is certainly, it scales down the vehicular traffic that could be coming onto the, onto this site, from 5,000 vehicles a day, cars for parking, to all the trucks for supplies and other things that would come on to that site to supply that huge wildlife park. So the applicant needs to have this property rezoned in order to use this property. I mean, without it, it can't be used, because there will not be a wildlife park in this I mean, without it, it can't be used because there will not be a wildlife park in this, in this area now. And especially since the commission is already changing some of the uses on the other, other properties adjacent to it, that we're going to house the actual wildlife and the activities and all those things that were going to be going on out there. So we don't think that it would be disruptive, and we ask that you approve the proposed changes to the PD text.
Anyone else that would come forward to speak in favor of ZM 5171? State your name for the record, please.
Good evening, Commissioners. Jake Kaya Tower with Robert Civil Engineering. I'm not the authorized agent on this project, however, I have been assisting both the Ligon Law Firm, the Smiths, and the future operators of the site just to basically see from a civil engineering perspective what can be done with this site. A few things I can, I wrote down a lot of concerns that were brought up, and a lot of them are very, very valid concerns, and we have answers for basically everything that was brought up. And after my speaking in favor of, I'm also available for any questions if we'd like to dive into some more of those points. But one thing I'd really like to do is, this concept was done by someone with a hand sketch. Mr. Putty was correct. I don't see a scale on there. That's, that's not our work. That was done something in the past. I have a concept plan that we did, actually it's dated. We were, we were approached by the Smiths in order to kind of look into what we could do. This is actually dated from back in September 13th, 2022, so I didn't just make this between MPC and now. There's actually been a lot of thought that's been put into this piece of property and kind of what can be the best use, given what is coming to the area. I'm before you many meetings, talking about this area and other areas as well. The comprehensive use map was done in 2018. Since then, it is true, the Buc-E's coming in has really changed kind of the potential for this area. We've done rezonings all around, and we have more to come. I can speak as well about additional single-family that's coming down the pipeline as well across on the other side of 95. But at this time, if you, if, with your permission, may I put this USB in and, and show the whole room what it looks like? And then also I have some handouts I can pass to y'all as well.
Ms. Leaf, does he need assistance to do that?
While we're pulling that up, I'll kind of talk through a few other points, and I'll work my way backwards from Mr. Graham back to Mr. Duncan, kind of in order of what might be fresh in mind. Mr. Graham brought up about 1,000, he brought about the concern about single-family housing. Across the road, there's about 1,000 acres that's currently being worked on and in the middle of transactions for single-family housing. In terms of this piece of property always being of the use of single-family, it's, it's been vacant. It has not been used as single-family. There was some families that lived on the property many, many, many years ago, but currently it sits untouched and vacant. Stepping back to 100 Miles, they, I truly believe that the 100 Miles Coalition, they do a great job in protecting this coastline. All the work we do tries to enhance our coastline, and I can think of no better way to showcase what Golden Island has to offer than to have a facility that brings people on the traveling public who are already be going to Puggies, Buc-E's, to stop and spend the night for a limited amount of time. There was a mention of the JD, or there was, of the wetlands being out of date. The JD actually was approved on December 27th, 2020. That's active for five years. So I've got that as well here from the Army Corps of Engineers. I can pass that around as well if y'all would like to see it. So the wetlands have been flagged, have been delineated, and a JD has been obtained for this piece of property. When we laid out this concept plan, we, these aren't just, you know, national wetland inventory. These are actually surveyed spots. Again, Mr. Putty had a good point about not sure about the survey. This was done by SHOOP Surveying, so I, I trust their accuracy 100%. What we did is we tried to lay out the site to work around the wetlands. So as you can see there, the, the clarity on the screen's a little rough, but there's a lot of green space that's remaining. One conversation that was brought up was about the density. The highway commercial density is 15 RVs per acre. At 500 units, this would be 6.77 units per acre. Kind of going back in terms of questions, there was a lot of talk about the arterial road. The arterial status is brought up in the ordinances pertaining to our definitions. So I'll read the definition of arterial street, which is those streets which are designed as arterials on the major thoroughfare plan and which are used or intended primarily for fast or heavy traffic. Ms. Cunningham, I'm impressed by the homework that she did on GDOT's website, and that was impressive. She's exactly right that it currently is a collector's street, and those streets are which carry traffic from minor and sub-collector streets to major system of arterial streets and highways, and those streets serve in commercial and industrial areas. But if you dive into it a little bit deeper, a collector's street is a right-of-way of 70 feet, an arterial street is a right-of-way of 80 feet. With the expansion of this road, this will be an arterial street. The expansion is coming. I talk to GDOT regularly about what's happening, not only along 99 but along 17, because we do have a lot of developments that we're excited to bring to the county that will be impacted by this expansion. So the, the comment was brought up, and I just wanted to clarify about there being other ownership right here, and that's correct. That is, there's a strip right here, and what that is, is that was purchased to dedicate as right-of-way for the expansion of 99. So this is a, this in essence is a good fit for the infrastructure that is in place and coming as well. As you can see down here, there is talk of emergency access right here. We like to have two access points whenever we have a development, especially of this density. And also, we show 100-foot buffer along the, the property line. This is a conceptual plan, but we truly tried to take what the existing PD had and parse the good points of the buffers and the access points and then lay out this site. And if, if this PD is approved, we'd continue with this design and come forward with full design plans and coordinate that with Glen County engineering staff.
You've exceeded the, the five minutes unless someone wants to yield in favor of time. Mr. Ligon spoke.
Yes, sir.
As, as the group spokesman, or that's how we allowed it, so.
Yes, sir. I, I appreciate the time and.
All right.
Thank you. Going back in terms of infrastructure, so we talked about the roads a little bit. There's talk about the capacity. So there is a pump station that's right here. It is a large pump station that basically pumps everything to the south. The amount of development that's coming, this is going to be upgraded, and as well as there are active plans, Joint Water and Sewer Commission is doing a very good job. They see the writing on the wall of what we're bringing before you in terms of development north of 99, south of 99, each side of 95, and they are also of the mindset that development's going to come. It's a matter of how do we prepare for it, and they're actively working on a new facility, trying to bring a new, a new plant processing facility in this part of the county, and in doing so will increase the utility capacity for their surrounding areas. A lot of folks talk about utilities not being able to handle incoming, incoming developments. Well, the way that we expand this infrastructure is through development, through new taxes, and projects such as these would have large TAP fees, which would help to pay to upgrade all systems surrounding it for the water and sewer capacity. One other thing is that, kind of seeing what else was brought up, the, the traffic, so we did talk, so I talked about the size of the road, but in terms of traffic, there is a LOI in place right now between Glen County and Buc-E's, in essence, to help enhance this road, and in doing so, it will serve this property very well. As it sits, this piece of property, personally, if I was to look at it, I can't think of a better use than an RV park. We look at stuff for commercial, residential, and I do believe that there's going to be more. I know that there's going to be more kind of along the support system of Buc-E's with them coming in, where there's going to be more projects coming down the line. So with that, I hope that you look at this project and look at the facts of what has been presented tonight, and please just let me know if you have any questions, and we would ask that you approve this as presented. Thank you.
We are 18 minutes into the speaking in favor of. Is there any other that wishes to come forward and speak in favor of ZM 5171? Anyone else speak in favor? All right. With that, we'll close the public hearing, and Commissioners, back to you. Do I hear a motion?
Mr. Chairman, just a couple comments from me. I, I will be voting against this, and I just want to explain why. You know, St. Simon's has gotten crowded and gotten full, and we've got a lot of issues over there. Brunswick and along that I-95 corridor is the next frontier eventually. We have the ports, I keep talking about that because people just don't understand the magnitude of adding another berth in the amount of shipping and, and our interstate system and rail system that's going to bring a lot of economic growth. I want people to have a place to live, and I want them to have a place to live comfortably in Glen County. And all along these corridors, that's going to be, you know, developed and taken away. And I understand what the previous zoning was in the property. That was a, a time when the energy for wildlife park was there, but it never materialized. It, it didn't make it, and I think that's probably a blessing in a way for our county. I think Glen County is one of the places that's a quality of life place, and we need to work to maintain it. And Buc-E's, okay, everybody was excited about that, and it's big, but Buc-E's is an in-out. You come in, there's no dining tables inside, there's no picnic tables outside. You're not hanging around. You come in there and you get your food.
Okay.
And head out.
Officers, can we find that noise and get it stopped, please?
Yes, sir.
I'm sorry.
No problem. Yes, sir. I think after the one little fire thing we had up here, we're all a little concerned with the noise. And, and on top of that, I, I think the Alderman Canal is still worth saving and preserving and all the development that goes up along there. When I look at this plan, it's really nice, really nice done, but as I travel the intercoastal waterways of Florida by boat a lot, this is a Florida development, you know? People coming south, and Florida's full, and the insurance is changing, so everybody's moving up. So those are just some of the things for me, I'm not going to be in favor of moving this forward, so.
Any comment from other Commissioners? All right. Do I hear a motion?
Well, I'll get us moving. I'll make a motion to deny the application.
Second. Got a motion and a second for denial? Any other discussion? Those who would vote to deny, please raise your right hand. Let's two against. Those who vote in favor, please raise your right hand. Is that how we would do it?
Oh, that's the hands.
Yeah, I am too, and I'm sorry. We got two to vote in denial. Those who.
Who oppose the motion.
Against denial is how I meant to say it. Thank you. Those that would vote against denial, please raise your right hand. Okay, so that is two in favor of denial, four that voted against it. So we still do not have a passing motion. Does that die on the vine at this point?
It, it would unless there's another motion on the table to be made.
Commissioners, do I hear another motion?
Mr. Chairman, I've moved that we approve the proposed zoning decision with modifications. Sorry, let me make sure I get this right.
Mr. Chairman, I've moved that we approve the proposed zoning decision with the modifications and conditions as presented by the MPC. Is that correct, Ms. Leaf?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, that's what I want to do is to approve based upon their modifications. Is that what, have I done that correctly?
Yes, I believe that's correct.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Second. So we have a motion by Commissioner Quinn, a second by Commissioner Brunson. Other discussion? I would like to say at this point that I understand the concerns of the residents. I understand that the area is going through a transition, and, and right now, I'm sure it feels a rapid transition. It looks to me like on this that zoning is going to have to change here. It cannot be, it's not going to be a wildlife park. It's a PDG as it sits now, and it would be a PD. I concur that commercial applications that would move down through that property and, and take up the majority of it would not be conducive to the overall well-being of Petersville Road and Heritage Estates in that arena. Believing that the new purchasers have a good design in this and that this park, an RV park, would be conducive to the other improvements that are coming out to that area, the street improvements that are coming. I don't, I don't see personally any other way but that you have to approve the rezoning. So with that, unless there's another comment, we'll call a vote. All those in favor of ZM 5171, please raise your right hand. And those against, two. So the motion passes four to two. Item number 18, approve the termination of a lease agreement with St. Simon's Surf Sailors Inn for the property located at Coast Guard Beach Park effective June 1, 2023, and authorize notice of such termination to be sent to St. Simon's Surf Sailors. And Commissioner Fendig, this has your name on it.
All right, sir. I'll, I'll be quick. In 2018, as most of you that are serving on this board know, that there was a master plan created for redevelopment of the Coast Guard Park. It was never funded and kind of sat stagnant. In 2019, because of sour grapes between the commission and the surf sailors, one of the issues, the surf sailors' lease expired and was not renewed, and they paid no rent for a couple of years. When Commissioner Rafalski and I came on the commission, we went and met with some of the master plan committee and got, met with the surf sailors from the very beginning to discuss what the issues were and what the master plan represented and how, how we could all work together. And this really, the passing of the CVB partnership on this, using the master plan as a guide for development and redevelopment of the park is, is where we're at. I just want the public to know that, contrary to what gets said and spread around, that the commission's been working very closely with all of these stakeholders, including the surf sailors. I just thought it would be a little interesting to know that the impact of the surf sailors and the presence is large, and the commission and the master plan really addresses a large part of that. There are 72 sailboats presently in that park. There are 110 members in the surf sailors, and each of those members pays a $300 a year membership. So I just think that it's been, was very gratuitous that they went two years and had no lease to pay to the county. But really, the, the issue is the multitude of windsurfers, paddle boats, puddle, yeah, paddle. paddle boats and kayaks, paddle boards, sorry, that are in there and where those might be stored. And of course, we're going to work to look and see what we can accommodate using the master plan as a guide. So because of the lease, it's up for renewal. We put a short-term lease, the surf sailors did pay when we put that lease in. It's up for renewal. We made it short-term because we knew we wanted to get this plan. We're not renewing the extension of that lease so that come January, when we move forward with the design team, we can sit all the stakeholders down and begin to use the park as a guide, the plan, and do the best we can to make everybody happy and clean it up and look forward to the future of a nice park. So that's what's happening. With that, I'd be glad to make a motion. I'll make a motion to approve the termination of the lease agreement with St. Simon Surf Sailors for the property located at Coast Guard Beach Park effective June 1, 2023, and authorize notice of such termination be sent to the St. Simon Surf Sailors.
Second.
I have a motion from Commissioner Fendig, a second from Commissioner O'Quinn. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. Need a motion to go into executive session for matters of personnel.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we go into executive session for matters of personnel.
Might fail for like a second. Commissioner O'Quinn made a motion to go into executive session. Commissioner Bronson gave the second. All in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. We stand in recess.
All in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, I move we author- Mr. Chairman, I move we authorize the county manager to offer a salary up to $115,000 to the candidate selected for the position of community development director.
Second.
Have a motion by Commissioner Quinn, a second by Commissioner Finn Dig to approve the position of community development director. Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous.